Welcome to our renovated boardroom today. It's light and bright in here, better screens, better microphones. So pretty excited about this. So call to order the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors meeting for January 5th, the 2:00 session. First order of business is the invocation. Dan Kim from Gum Spring United Methodist Church. Is that correct? Welcome. Thank you. Stand if you're able, please.
Thank you for the opportunity and want to wish everyone a happy and healthy new year. Let us pray. Holy and eternal God, your days are without beginning and without end, and yet we give you thanks for giving us another moment, another day, another year. We recommit this time and our good work to you and to the prosperity of all your people here in Goochlin. In these initial hours, we give you thanks for your faithfulness. There have been many struggles, many sorrows and challenges, still as the coronavirus threatens so many in our community, nation and the world. And yet, we are still here and able to give you thanks because there are good and kind people all over this community that are stepping up to alleviate that suffering. May we, whom you call to serve, remember those who are most vulnerable, those who are most at risk, those who have no options, those with no safe homes or places to go, and those losing much in this economy. Help us to choose love over fear. We are grateful, too, for the heroism of so many of our fellow community members in healthcare, community services and essential workplaces. We ask your blessing upon them and upon each member of this board, that they might be their best selves this year for the good of the people. They have taken oaths to do so, and give them your strength to fulfill those oaths, and may the work of this body continue effectively for the benefit of your community. And where the efforts of this body have fallen short, we ask for your grace and mercy. We need thee every hour. When we are puzzled, guide us with your wisdom. When we are worn and weary, grant us strength to find a just and fair way. And when we cannot physically wrap our arms around each other, let us yet find ways to be the loving embracing of God to our neighbors. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. So now we begin our annual organizational meeting, and at this point, I turn the gavel over to Mr. Young.
Thank you, Chair. Supervisors, I hereby open the floor to nominations for Chair for the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors for 2021. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Young, it's my pleasure to nominate John Lumpkins as for Chair for Goochlin County Board of Supervisors for 2021.
Are there any other nominations? See no other nominations. I'll have a second. I'll now call for a roll call vote. Supervisor Spoonhour?
Aye.
Supervisor Laskalet?
Aye.
Supervisor Lumpkins?
Aye.
Supervisor Sharp?
Aye.
Supervisor Peterson?
Yes.
I'll hereby open the floor for nominations for the Vice Chair for Goochlin County Board of Supervisors for 2021.
Mr. Young, I nominate Ken Peterson to serve as Vice Chair for this year.
Second. Here's a second. Do I have any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, I hereby close the floor to nominations and ask for, I've already had a motion and seconded, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Supervisor Sharp?
Yes.
Supervisor Peterson?
Yes.
Supervisor Spoonhour?
Yes.
Supervisor Lumpkins?
Yes.
Supervisor Laskalet?
Yes.
And Board members, I recommend you entertain a motion to approve a resolution electing the 2021 Chair and Vice Chair of Goochlin County Board of Supervisors as presented.
Do you need a motion for that, Mr. Young?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. I so move.
Second.
I'll ask for a roll call vote. Supervisor Peterson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sharp?
Yes.
Supervisor Laskalet?
Yes.
Supervisor Spoonhour?
Yes.
Supervisor Lumpkins?
Yes.
That is all. Thank you. Now Chair, turn the gavel over to the new Chair, Mr. Lumpkins.
Just quick switcheroo. Oh, goodbye, gavel.
this past year. It was a challenging year, and you certainly set the bar high for me for this year, and I know on behalf of all the Board members in the community, we thank you for all that you've done in the past year to keep us on a steady path in a difficult year. We're going to dive right into the agenda. Second item is a resolution adopting our Code of Ethics and our Standards of Conduct and Rules of Procedure.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, every year at your annual meeting, the Board of Supervisors considers these documents, makes any needed revisions and adopts them to set the course of your behavior as a Board and individuals for this year. For your Code of Ethics, the Board members proposed revisions to the language in Section 5 regarding discrimination, making, choosing to make a stronger statement against discrimination, and then expanding the categories to include two new categories identified under Virginia state law this past year. Those are in the proposed Code of Ethics before you. In that same document is a standard of conduct. No changes are made within your standard of conduct. The other document before you is your Rules of Procedure. I proposed rewording for clarity, Section 2.6 regarding the Order of Business and Section 2.10, which was participation by electronic communications. And those were not substantive changes, but making more clear how those two sections worked. And then the Board has asked to revise the Citizen Comment period to allow a representative speaker to receive time from other residents and speak for longer than three minutes, to speak for up to 10. That is, as is already permitted for public hearings. That amendment has been incorporated into the revision that I've provided you on the dais. It was not in the distributed agenda packet. However, to include that amendment, you would first need to make a motion to suspend the rules of procedure to waive the five-day notice that you're supposed to have of any amendments. And then, once that motion passes, you could have a motion to approve the rules of procedure as they have been amended. So those are the two documents before you for consideration today.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. All right. The Code of Ethics, every year, the Board takes a look at this, and this year was no exception. And as Ms. McGee noted, we did make some changes in one paragraph five, in a paragraph, in paragraph number five, and I'm going to read that change. There was a lot of discussion around this, as there is every year, and number five now reads that we will adopt policies and programs that support the rights and recognize the needs of all Goochlin County citizens and avoid adopting policies or engaging in activities that discriminate against Goochlin County citizens because of race, sex, age, religion, creed, country of origin, disability, sexual orientation or gender identity. We do not tolerate discrimination based on race, sex, age, religion, creed, country of origin, disability, sexual orientation or gender identity. So Ms. McGee has covered other changes, but let's deal with the, if the Board is agreeable, let's deal with the Code of Ethics and Standards of Conduct first. Either entertain a motion or if there's any discussion.
So I think we're looking for a motion to suspend the written notice of the amendments.
I think that's, that's on part two, if I'm correct, right?
Obviously, it's the Chair's preference. Typically, if you have one agenda item, the way that the clerk then needs to record the action is as one motion. So the motion proposed-
So if we are, if we're going to combine the, the suspension is for the rules of procedure, is that correct?
Yes. But if you suspend it first, again, specific to just the waiver of written notice, then a motion could be to approve the Standards of Conduct and Code of Ethics as presented and the Rules of Procedure as amended. And that would allow you to do it all in one motion, which is how our tracking system follows.
Okay. Well, obviously, if we're going to package both documents in one motion, then we need, if the Board is interested in suspending the required five-day notice regarding the rules of procedures, because we're making, we've made a change there. Ms. McGee covered a couple of them, and one of them, Ms. Laskalet diligently noticed that in the Citizen's Comment period, we had that, the provision that allowed folks to pass their time, two minutes of their time off to another person. We only, the way it was written, I think our practice was we allowed it in both Citizen Comment period and public hearings, but it's, our procedures were just in public hearings. So the change that we've made there is to bring that same provision and no matter what the situation is, that the public is speaking to us, whether it's a public hearing or Citizen Comment period. So with that change, just coming today, we need to waive the five-day notice that we would be entitled to, to review this. So I'll entertain a motion to do that first, and if that passes, then we'll move on to wrapping up everything together.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board suspend its Rules of Procedure, just waive the five-day written notice of amendments to the Rules of Procedure.
All right, second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Spoonhour and Ms. Laskalet. I think probably safe to do a roll call vote on that, if you would, Mr. Young.
I'd just like to make a comment, if you don't mind.
Thank you. No, yes.
Normally, I don't vote for suspending the rules, because the rules are there for a reason, to give public notice, five days in this case, for a change. However, in this case, all we're doing is actually expanding our rules to meet, as Mr. Lumpkin said, our practice. So it gives actually, it's, I think it's beneficial to the public and not taking something away. So that's the reason why I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Just go ahead.
None. Mr. Chair, you get your inauguration here as a chairman for Robert's Rules of Order, but I think we have the procedures for the Rules of Procedure down pretty good.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion on the motion that's on the floor? All right, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Sure. Supervisor Laskalet?
Yes.
Supervisor Spoonhour?
Yes.
Supervisor Sharp?
Yes.
Supervisor Peterson?
Yes.
Chair Lumpkins?
Yes.
Okay, if that motion passes unanimously, so we can, if the Board is inclined, we can adopt both our Code of Ethics as written and Standard of Conduct and the Rules of Procedure, all in one motion. I'll entertain a motion to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd love to move that the Board approve the resolution adopting the 2021 Board of Supervisors Code of Ethics, Standards of Conduct as presented, and the Rules of Procedure as amended, to include the acclamation of time during Citizen Comment period.
Thank you, Mr. Spoonhour. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any discussion? All right, one more roll call vote on this one, please.
I will just, actually, Mr. Chairman, I will say, just proud of this Board for continuing with its commitment to continually evaluate how we're doing things and doing things in the most equitable manner. So just thank my peers for, for looking deep into these things and doing the best for our citizens.
Thank you, sir. No other comments? Go ahead with the roll call then.
Supervisor Sharp?
Yes.
Supervisor Peterson?
Yes.
Supervisor Spoonhour?
Yes.
Supervisor Laskalet?
Yes.
Chair Lumpkins?
Yes.
All right. I, I've already made some comments. Next, well, no, we have a resolution establishing the Board of Supervisors meeting schedule. I believe that's up next, if I can get my windows on my computer here to work for me. That's up next. Adoption of our meeting schedule. Bring that up.
Well, seems like I'm out of roll this year. Mr. Chairman, I will move that we adopt the resolution establishing the Board of Supervisors 2021 meeting schedule as presented.
And that is on page 24 of our packet, if anybody needs to, okay, so it is, there's been a motion to adopt that meeting schedule.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Spoonhour. Mr. Peterson, any discussion? All right, hearing none. I think we can probably do this just by a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? Thank you. All right. Briefly, next up is Chair comments. I just want to thank you all for the confidence and the vote in putting me here as Chair. It's an honor. It's a privilege, and I really appreciate the trust that you all have given me. I was thinking that we could tell the citizens that 2021 is going to be a good year, that you all had me the gavel. That's a good sign of a good year, but, but I know we, you know, the year is, there's some things continuing from last year that, but the good news is, Goochlin has business that it's tending to. We tended to it last year. We'll continue to do the same this year. And a lot of good things going on here in Goochlin, and we're looking forward to a good year. Appreciate all of the staff that did last year to navigate through yeoman's work. Really proud of the staff, the schools, and see Dr. Rayly here. What a, what a challenging year, but you have teachers that, you know, I know Mr. Spoonhour visited. Thank you for, you know, offering us the opportunity to tour. More of us will take you up on that. But I know Mr. Spoonhour's words to me after he saw, we have, we have a whole lot of teachers working real hard, and that's happening throughout the community, and I'm honored to serve as Chair this year on this, on this Board. Like, like Mr. Spoonhour said, we dig into the details and we try to pay attention to what's going on and do the best we can to serve our community. With that, Mr. Young, do you have some comments?
Good afternoon, Board members, and welcome back from your short break. Look forward to spending a lot of quality time over this year, working on the budget, the capital improvement plan, and a ballot question, to name a few items. Staff is actively engaged in the budget process. In February, I will introduce the county administrator's budget, which is a budget that is a balanced set of recommendations against expenditures and revenues for the county for the upcoming fiscal year 2022. We have met with all the departments, agency partners and constitutional officers, and we will continue with that process. The largest expenditure in our budget is our county public schools. Ms. Horlocker and I have worked very closely at the staff level with Dr. Rayly and the schools, and we're monitoring the state's impact to the school's budget as we speak. The major challenges of our collective budget this year will continue to be our capital improvement plan and identifying ways to fund public safety positions and operations. On a brighter note, I am pleased to inform the residents of Goochlin County that the lights at the Oilville Park and Ride are now operational, and the Welcome to Goochlin Monument sign is in place on Route 6 as you enter from Henrico County. And we currently are working on a second sign for the Broad Street location. I'd like to thank my deputy, Mr. Stamey, for bringing those projects to a close for us and following those through with all of our partners. That is all I have for you today.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I think you might be up next to just, we're going to look at finalizing our agenda, see if there's any changes. Mr. Young, do you have any item to?
I do, Mr. Chair. I would like to request to move item number one under Section 12 of new business entitled "Consideration of Bonuses to County Employees and Employees of Constitutional Officers" to follow item number two of the public hearings.
So move, move item one to?
To hear that after the two public hearings that you have.
Right, right, right.
You have the one public hearing that is to consider giving yourself the authority to give those bonuses, and the other one is the appropriation.
I'm just trying to see where to move it. Okay, okay. Just flip the page over. Got, yep. And somebody was helping me out here with typing a lot of red on this, so, thank you. Yeah, no, it's, it's quite.
And we don't need a vote on that? We just need-
I just, I think, I think what we'll do is, just by, unless there's any other requests on, on the agenda item, I'm just going to go ahead and proceed with the agenda with that one amendment. And that rolls us right into Citizen Comment period for the first Citizen Comment period of 2021. It's open.
Well, good afternoon, Board members, and congratulations, Mr. Lumpkins, on your role as Chair. Look forward to working with you in, in this role for the future. Jeremy Rayly, 2212 Parkers Hill Drive in Maidens, speaking today as a citizen, and just want to thank you for your recognition of the efforts of all county employees with your consideration today of a potential bonus for county employees and the potential appropriation of funds to the school division for them to authorize bonuses in relation to what the county is doing. Just want to thank you for the recognition of the efforts of all county employees, and just wanted to share our appreciation for thinking about county employees today.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Rayly. Mr. Buzzard, you, you're monitoring the Zoom?
Yes, sir. We have one attendee, but they do not have their hand raised right now.
Okay, perfect. I'll, I'll remember to come back to you, but I thought we would handle the folks in the room first, and then, and then we'll see. For, well, you said one person, hopefully they can hear us okay, and then they'll know to raise their hand if they want to speak. All right, and the public comment period is still open, and it looks like all familiar faces here, but I did forget to say the rules are, please identify yourself and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Congratulations, Mr. Lumpkins. You know the old saying, be careful what you wish for. So Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Manikin Road, Director for Monakin Soil and Water Conservation District. Just a quick update, agricultural is in a fallow period right now, because that's what happens in the winter, but things are going on in the ag community. Monakin will have its organizational meeting on Monday, the 11th. We do meet at the Ag Center on Dogtown Road. We socially, we physically distance, and we meet in the auditorium, so visitors and the public are invited to attend. The Goochlin Farm Bureau also is having a change in command, if you will. Knight Bowles has served as President for the last two and a half years, and as of January 1st, Ernie Pryor is now the President of the Goochlin Farm Bureau. I know Mr. Spoonhour benefited from a tour of the agricultural regions in the western part of the county with Mr. Bowles. I would extend that invitation to all of the Board of Supervisor members to spend some time with the Goochlin Farm Bureau members and learn more about the agriculture community. It is still a big part of what makes Goochlin, Goochlin. We are, as, as a Monakin district, scuttlebutt is that the governor's budget is going to be somewhat kind to us. There is about a $2 million reduction in funding for best management practices that will come to the Monakin district through DCR. We appreciate Ms. Horlocker and Mr. Woodburn meeting with us and considering our request for support from the, the Board here. I also would like to know that, or let you know that if anybody's interested and does not have enough meetings on their schedule, there is a Zoom meeting tomorrow at 10:00 with the Director of DCR, DEQ, NCRS, discussing some of the upcoming activities in 2021. So I can provide anybody wants that link, the ability to come in. The light flashed. I was a little concerned there would be a Lyle amendment to the public comment that would grant me two minutes instead of three. If I had known ahead of time, I would have brought some people with me to cede time, but my new resolution is not to do that to you. I also want to put my tourism hat on and congratulate you for the touchscreens that are out in the lobby. I think that is, once again, a nice interface with the public and their ability to get information on their terms, when they need it and how they need it. So thank you for doing that. And, and I want to thank you guys, because I know that it's not for the glory, it's for the phone calls about the water in the ditch, about the dogs running loose, and all those other important, and they are important, issues that face the community. And your willingness to stand or sit here and look out for Goochlin County, as any individual citizen, I appreciate that very much. And again, as they say, be careful what you wish for. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lyle. Anyone else in the room? All right, Mr. Buzzard, is anybody online?
I see no one with their hand raised right now.
All right. Thank you. I know there's a few second delay, so I'll wait a couple more seconds and close the public comment period. All right, next on the agenda is approval of minutes from November 4th and November 24th meeting. The sample motion is on page 26. That's the beginning of the, first page on the packet, page 27, and then page 53 for the November 24th minutes. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Board of Supervisor meeting minutes from November 4th and 24th, 2020.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Laskalet and Mr. Spoonhour. We have a motion, second. Any discussion in regard to those two meeting minutes? All right. We will just do this by voice. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, standing. Next item, we're going into reports, and I believe after last month that VDOT is not attending meetings in person, so we have the VDOT report in the packet. Correct?
That is correct, Chair. And if there is anything that the Board wants to either say here on record, or if you want to just send it to us, we will make sure it gets to VDOT appropriately.
Okay, these, these are for information only, and that begins on page 59, the VDOT The next report, we have Ms. Sutton here from our HR department. For introduction of new county staff, Happy New Year and welcome.
Happy New Year. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and Mr. Young. My name is Michelle Sutton, and I work in the Human Resources Department. On behalf of the county administration, I am pleased to announce new staff in Parks and Recreation, the Commissioner of Revenue's Office and the Human Resources Department. Due to resignations, Chloe Carter, Darius Carroll, Tamara Dorsey, Sidney Harris, Brenna McHugh and Hannah Salmon recently joined the Parks and Recreation Team as part-time recreation aides. Margaret, can I have you stand, please? Thanks. Due to her resignation, Margaret Parish began employment with the county on December 16th, 2020, as a Deputy Commissioner of Revenue 1. Margaret comes to us with over 15 years of experience in customer service. Welcome. Do you stand? Due to her resignation, Rebecca Woody began employment with the county on December 16th, 2020, as a Deputy Commissioner of Revenue 1. Rebecca comes to us from Essex Bank, where she was a Financial Services Associate. Welcome. Can I have you stand? Due to her retirement, Jessica Rice joins the county as the new Human Resources Director. She comes to us after serving as the Human Resources Manager for Fluvanna County. Before that, she was a Risk Management Specialist for the City of Charlottesville. I would like to welcome all new staff to Goochlin County. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
And this concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton, and welcome again, Ms. Parish, Ms. Woody, and Ms. Rice. We'll look forward to working with you, Ms. Rice, I'm sure. We'll see you soon. Next, on the reports, Planning Commission reports, that page number is 65. Again, information only, things coming up. The Board is, you know, can review this, but are there, if there are any comments or questions of, of staff from the Board on these, it's certainly will accommodate that.
I do have one, Mr. Lumpkins.
Yes.
This is on page 75, new plan of developments filed in District One, the farms at Haydensville, improve an existing gravel drive to county standards. Is that state standards? And I can get with you guys later in planning.
It would be.
State standards? Okay, thank you.
Item of page 75. Thank you.
That's all I had.
All right. Scrolling through that. Any, any other comments on that item four? Next item, hearing now, next item is the Accounts Affordable Report, beginning on page 77. Again, information item only. Seeing no comments or questions on that. A new item this year that I suggested, and we'll probably won't do much with that today unless somebody has something on their minds, but what I'm going to look to at the last, at the end of the reports, I'll look to Board members if they have any reports from committees you serve on, Central Virginia Transportation Authority, the TPO, Plan RBA, even the Finance and Audit Committee, CLEO, things that you all serve on. This might be a good time to share among ourselves, things that are coming up. I know we have a Finance Audit Committee meeting next, next month, but just a chance to maybe, while we're together, and can alert one another to things coming up, and also, I think, inform the public and the community of the events and things that are going on on things you're serving. It doesn't have to be a formal place of service. I know several of us also participate in, you know, less formal community activities, housing efforts and the like. So, if anybody has anything now, I'll just open it up. Going forward, I hope to maybe just kind of give you a heads up, and I'll start at one end and go down and change it up, you know, go in from one end to the other. We're, and there's no, not expecting everybody to have a report, but I just want to give everybody an opportunity to share reports like in that nature.
Good idea.
Anything for today?
Uh-uh.
All right. Thank you. So, we're rolling right along. We are now on the consent agenda, and there are several things. And I'm going to let Mr. Young take it from here on the consent agenda items to fill us in on what's in there.
Happy to do that, Mr. Chair. There are four items on your consent agenda for this afternoon. Item one is consideration of a resolution establishing a code of ethics and standards of conduct for county appointees. In order to ensure that all persons who represent Goochlin County follow the same high ethical and moral standards, a code of ethics and standards of conduct for county appointees is proposed. The ethics and standards are similar to those expected of the members of the Board of Supervisors and county employees. The Board is requested to adopt the resolution establishing a code of ethics and standards of conduct for persons appointed by the Board to represent Goochlin on boards, commissions, committees, and authorities. Item number two is authorization for the county administrator to execute a purchase order for the installation of replacement athletic lighting at the Central High Cultural and Educational Complex. The existing lighting infrastructure dates back to the 1970s. It's not efficient. It has a high level of light pollution. This new lighting is highly efficient and lowers the light pollution that is emitted. The lighting upgrades were procured through a competitive process with James Madison University, which allows cooperative procurement by other public bodies. The Board approval is required for capital improvement projects exceeding $150,000 per county code, Section 1136. The Board is requested to authorize the county administrator to execute a purchase order with Musco Sports Lighting LLC in an amount not to exceed $267,600 for the removal of existing ball field lighting and installation of replacement lighting at Central High School Cultural and Educational Complex. Item number three is a resolution requesting VDOT accept the Wilkes Ridge Parkway extension into the secondary system of state highways for maintenance. A resolution for VDOT to accept the Wilkes Ridge Parkway extension into secondary roadway systems for maintenance adds approximately .4 miles to the end of Wilkes Ridge Parkway and provides access to the Avery Point Continuing Care Retirement Community, which is currently under construction. Item number four is consideration of a resolution approving an amendment to the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission and Plan RBA Charter Agreement. The regional planning organization for Goochlin, Hanover, Henrico, Richmond, Chesterfield, Powhatan, New Kent, Charles City, and Ashland has proposed amendments to its charter. The following amendments are proposed for localities whose governing bodies are entitled to more than one vote, allowing governing body members to represent more than one vote at the option of the locality. The second change is to allow another member of a locality's governing body to serve as an alternate member if the appointed, the appointed governing body member is unable to be present. Three, allow each locality to determine the term of office for its appointees. Four, permit Plan RBA's offices to be located outside of the city of Richmond so long as they are located central to the region. And the fifth change is to amend the vote distribution chart to include higher population ranges and provide additional votes for localities with higher populations. The Board is requested to adopt the following resolution approving amendments to the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission Plan RBA Charter. That is your consent agenda for today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Young. And, and Board members, I plan to continue the practice we've had in place, and I should have done this before he went, Mr. Young went through those, but anytime there's something that somebody would like pulled out of the consent agenda, if, if any, any one Board member wants it, I plan to honor that, and we'll pull it out and have a separate discussion. It's not too late to do that now if anybody wants to pull something out for separate discussion, but we can certainly discuss the items, and we will, certainly will discuss these items, even though they may remain on a consent agenda. But does anybody speak now if anybody wants to pull anything out? Not seeing any, then, the consent agenda is before us. Is there, we'll get to a motion in a moment, but if there are any questions of Mr. Young, this might be a good time to ask if there are any questions on the, and even comments. Plan RBA, I have, I have a question, Mr. Young. That, that is, we've ended up adopting what they, they have presented, what was presented to us from the attorney for Plan RBA. Is that right?
That is correct.
All right. And on the code of ethics and standards for county appointees, Ms. McGee, can you give us a little background on that? Is that?
Yes. I believe it was several months ago, perhaps in the summertime. It simply came to staff's attention while you all have a standards of conduct and, and code of ethics as you adopt every year, and in the employee manual, as you know, we adopted an HR manual not too long ago, it also has a code of ethics in it, and the employees are held to some of the same ethics as you are. They're essentially the same. Some of the words have to be changed a little bit to apply to employees besides Board, but they're the same. We realized that the only group of people who represent Goochlin County but do not have a written document saying these are the high standards we expect of anyone who represents Goochlin County, were residents and employees that you appoint to various boards and commissions, whether it's a member of your Planning Commission, whether it's an individual who serves on the Park and Rec Advisory Council. Many people volunteer their time to represent Goochlin County on these boards. We simply wanted to apply evenly, let them know that we did have that same expectation of code of ethics and standards of conduct of them that we all hold, that you hold the employees and yourselves to. So, we, again, made a few minor wording changes to make it applicable to those appointees and brought it for you today. It made most sense to put it before you at the same time you were doing your own, and the one before you today has the same revisions that you had made about, say, discrimination in your charter. There, it is in this one, it's to the code of ethics and standards of conduct. So, that's the context, and it's just letting everybody know about those high standards you hold everyone that, that represents Goochlin County.
Thank you, Ms. McGee, for that. And this, this was a very, another, I think, very positive step that the Board is looking to make. So, if there's any further discussion on the consent agenda items, or if there's a motion, we can continue discussion after a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Goochlin Board of Supervisors approve the consent agenda items, agenda items one through four.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Spooner and Mr. Peterson. Motion and second. Any discussion?
Oh, thank you.
I'm just getting ready for the...
The green light means...
Well...
Roll call vote on this one, please, Mr. Young.
Supervisor. Supervisor Spooner.
Yes.
Supervisor Laskolet.
Yes.
Supervisor Peterson.
Yes.
Supervisor Sharp.
Yes.
Chair Lumpkins.
Yes.
Thank you, Board. Thank you, Mr. Young. Okay, rolling right along, new business. The item one there has been moved, so I think we're going to roll into appointments. And that is going to be on page 108 of our board packet. We have our appointments. We have a Design Review Committee. And then, Board member, you might want to pay attention to this item, because...
[laughing]
Yeah, yeah. This, this is where you all, we're all stepping up for our various committees, and I think we have everything. Does everybody see everything in there?
Yeah.
Audit and Finance Committee remains the same. Thank you, Mr. Sharp, for continuing on CLEO. Mr. Spooner, CVTA and Plan RBA, and Ms. Laskolet and myself on the TPO. And that is all of the required appointments. There's a draft motion at the top of page 109, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors approve the appointments as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Laskolet. Any discussion?
The only discussion I would have, Mr. Chair, is for the RTPO. Typically, there's an executive committee and then the formal committee. I'm not sure if we want to call out here which one will represent which. They meet, the executive committee meets first and then second, but it can be worked out amongst the, amongst you and Ms. Lasko, not Ms. Laskolet, but just want to call that out.
That's a good catch. Thank you. I'm so used to the 9:30 start on those.
Yeah, that's because you made me go to the 8:30.
You were covering the 8:30. I didn't even think about this.
I was going to tell you later.
Okay. All right. Well, there's a motion and a second, and thank you. Any, any other discussion? See the green light over there, so that's been told to look for the green light. All right. Motion and second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, thank you all for your service on these various committees and for the service of Steve Ferracci on the Design Review Committee. And I know we'll have some other appointments coming up this year, as some expiration dates are coming on some of the various groups. All right, next on the agenda is, I think, a closed meeting, because we have moved the item one to the next session, tonight, to tonight, this evening's meeting. So, there's no need for a closed meeting or certification, and I think we're done for our first meeting even earlier than the earliest predictions.
Wow.
Yeah, 45 minutes. Thank you all again for attending. We'll be on a break until 6:00?
4:30.
Or 4:30, yeah, 4:30, Board members. And we'll see everybody back here at 6:00. Thank you. Good evening. We'll call to order the 6:00 PM session of the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors, January 5th, 2021, meeting. And we start this evening's session with citizen comment period, and we do have access via Zoom online, so I'm going to start there, Mr. Buzzard. We'll give people a few minutes, but let me know if anybody raises their hand. In Zoom, I believe at the bottom right of your screen, there's an ellipse or three or four period symbols. If you click there, I think there should be another pop-up that says raise hand. And if you're calling in, I think dial star nine, right? So, is anybody online that would like to make a public comment?
I don't see any hand raised right now, sir.
Okay, we might come back just, just in case, but open the floor to people in the room. If anybody wants to come forward and speak to us about anything pertaining to Goochlin County, just limit your comments, please, to three minutes, and state your name and address, if you would. And anybody raise their hand on the Zoom?
Yes, someone just raised their hand.
All right, you, you have to take it from here.
Okay, unmute.
Hello. Please state your name and address, and we'll keep the mic open for three minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Tony Emma. I live at 3007 Royal Virginia Parkway in the Royal Virginia Estates. I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and thank you for the work you're doing to keep us safe. We love it here in Royal Virginia. We've been here for nine years now, and ever since we were dropping off my daughter at West Younde James almost 30 years ago, Goochlin's been a big part of our lives. Around Labor Day weekend, I walked my dog past what was once the Royal Virginia Golf Course Clubhouse, now vacant for several years. All the contents of the house had been thrown out onto the front deck and front lawn. Curious, I walked up to the front door where a note was taped to the door. Scrawled across it was clubhouse renovation, called Justin Bates, and a phone number. I called while standing there and was told by Mr. Bates that the clubhouse was being turned into transitional housing for mental patients and convicts. That's a direct quote from him, and that he was in contract to buy the golf course consisting of two lots, each in excess of 100 acres. The next day, I called Joanne Hunter at the county offices to try and get more information, and was told that Mr. Bates had indicated that he would be converting the existing clubhouse back to a single-family use for the purpose of creating a group home, which I was told is a formality likely to be granted and an administrative process with no opportunity for public hearings. Mr. Bates has told other members of the community that he also intends to take advantage of what has been termed a loophole to build an additional three-group homes on the property once the clubhouse has been reclassified as single-family use, taking advantage of the provision in county code, Section 15-285 F3, whereby lots of 100 acres or more can have up to four single-family dwellings. By reclassifying the clubhouse to single-family use, the quote, "County is then legally prohibited from imposing on group homes or assisted living facilities any regulation or requirement different..." different than those imposed on all other residential dwelling units." In short, there is nothing to stop him from building and getting approvals for three additional group homes. The current A1 zoning of the golf course property, preserving its agricultural use, and the intent of the four dwelling for 100 acres provision was clearly to allow for either family compounds on family farms or other dwellings associated with the care and maintenance of agricultural activity. It is an aberration of the intended purpose of what is a very reasonable and community-conforming concept to now suggest that eight group homes could be built in a community of 42 homes. It isn't fair to the people who never thought the golf course would go away and their neighborhood drastically changed. As applications from Mr. Bates have yet to be submitted for review and the sale of the property in question has yet to close, a review of County Code, Section 15-285-F3, would, I feel, be in the best interest of the county at large and the community at Royal Virginia. As has been discussed at a meeting held recently that the county held for us on the subject, in its current form, there is nothing stopping Mr. Bates from building out eight group homes on the two parcels that he will be purchasing in the Royal Virginia community. This precedent will also transfer to all similar properties in the county and provide those in the group home business, or it is a business, of taking advantage of this loophole. Your serious consideration is considered to amend this situation. There are other issues of concern with the applicant that I will reserve discussion on until applications have been received. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Buzzard, anybody else online?
No one else this time.
All right, we'll close the citizen comment, period. All right, we move to public hearings, and we have two public hearings this evening. And the first one, we're going to consider an ordinance to add Goochlin County Code, Section 2-4, related to the award of bonuses to county employees, public schools, employees, and employees of constitutional officers. And our county attorney, Ms. McGee, will start us off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a public hearing for the public to be able to speak to a proposed ordinance amendment to the Goochlin County Code. Under state law, Virginia Code 15.21508, in order for a locality to be able to pay any monetary bonuses to employees, it has to adopt an ordinance granting that permission. The proposed ordinance before you creates simply a mechanism through which bonuses can be authorized in the future. The, simply allows that the bonus would be provided pursuant to direction of the Board of Supervisors or pursuant to an HR policy manual. It does not in and of itself provide for a particular bonus, simply allows that authority for now or in the future, bonuses to be awarded. And that is the ordinance, Section 2-4, for adoption, open for public comment this evening.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Board members, the, on our, on our monitors behind us and screens in front of us is the actual ordinance, and you can find it on page 112 of our packet. I'll go ahead and take the opportunity, if there were any questions of Ms. McGee, we can do that quickly before I open the public hearing. Seeing none, we will open the public hearing on this item. And we'll start, I'll go ahead, we'll go ahead and start. Okay, nobody's, Mr. Buzzard's saying nobody has raised their hand, so let's start in the room. Come on up. Thank you, sir. Come on up. And that, press the button on there, if you don't mind, so that that light turns green. Well, that one. Thank you.
The red button is now green. Okay, Jonathan Lau, 1521 Mannequin Road. I very much appreciate this opportunity that the board is giving itself. Not that the public sector and the private sector are the same, but my experiences in the private sector has been this kind of flexibility is, is a nice tool to have in the toolbox. As you are aware, I believe, I am a director for the Monican Soil and Water Conservation District, which is a subdivision or not, I'm not, it's a sub-political entity. And so our employees are public employees also, and we have explored this opportunity also. And one of the things that was brought to our attention is, under the VRS retirement system, these type of compensations don't count towards their retirement calculations, which I'm okay with because they still are being compensated, it's just in the big picture maybe won't pay out 20 or 25 years down the road. So keeping a stable or a set operating costs is a good thing, and as revenues ebb and flow, which they do, both public sector and private sector, this tool, I believe, gives the board an opportunity to recognize and compensate staff without necessarily arbitrarily or continually increasing the set operating costs of the county. Payoff or the set off, offset, I should say, is that the employees would not have this amount of compensation recognized in their retirement calculations. And it's an imperfect world. I'm sure if someone wanted to not take the bonus so that their compensation calculations would be different, would be entitled to do that. So that's a long wind-up, almost three minutes' worth of a wind-up, of saying that I support you adopting this and giving yourselves that flexibility. And, and there you go. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Lau. And Mr. Buzzard, has anybody raised their hand?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Seeing no more folks coming forward, we will close this public hearing. Board members, any discussion, any motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt this resolution, ordinance, adopt this ordinance.
As presented, right?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Laskolet and Mr. Sharp.
Now I have a question.
Yes.
Let's see where it is in here. It's one, two, three, four, five, five, the fifth whereas down. The board is determined that bonuses will be paid either pursuant to established human resource policies slash employee manual or at the direction of the board. So I guess my question is, and I should have probably asked this question earlier, will the board have input on the human resource policies?
Yes, Ms. Laskolet, is actually, in considering how we brought forth the actual item, we chose not to do it that way in, in working with the board. I believe the board has wanted to make sure that it's in public, and so I actually chose the route of going with bringing it to the board, having the board give me the direction. And I think that's how I'd really like to proceed as long as I'm here. When we bring, if we were to go to it and an option where it is an actual policy that we put in place in the HR manual, I would first bring it to you for consideration as the board, and then we'd put it into practice if that was the way we were going to go.
Okay.
And Ms. Laskolet, let me, let me point, let me point something out to your, to your question. I thought the same thing when I was reading the ordinance. If you look, and maybe the county attorney can help me, but I'm going to start with the ordinance with the resolution being kind of subordinate to the ordinance itself. But look at the, look at the ordinance and look at the last sentence in a part, well, Section 2-4. Bonuses may be paid pursuant to criteria outlined in human resource policies adopted by the Board of Supervisors or at the direction of the board. So seeing that gave me some comfort that.
Good point. Okay, good, thank you.
And Ms. McGee, am I right? I mean, I know the recital's the whereas, but if we were to want to start at what really counts, we're going to read the ordinance, right?
That is correct, and the Human Resource Policy Manual comes before the board for approval. It did this past year when it was rewritten, and it would in the future, so. But you are correct, the ordinance specifies, whereas the whereas is a more general, the ordinance specifies those policies would be approved by the board.
Thank you.
All right. And so we have a motion and a second, and discussion is still open if there's any other discussion. Okay. All right.
Excuse me, Chair, I just want, I just want to make sure I have clarification there. It is, the, the motion is to add Section 2-4, allowing bonuses to be awarded to employees. Is that correct?
That's exactly right.
Yes.
Yeah, I think.
It's the, the adoption of Goochlin County 2-4, which allows the bonuses to be awarded to employees.
That's what I heard. Prove as presented to adopt the ordinance. Okay, yeah, go ahead, and if you're ready with the roll call.
Supervisor Spooner.
Yes.
Supervisor Laskolet.
Yes.
Supervisor Peterson.
Yes.
Supervisor Sharp.
Yes.
Chair Lumpkins.
Yes. All right, that passes unanimously. And let me, let's continue here. Next, next public hearing, to consider fiscal year 2021 budget amendments. And our Finance, Director of Finance, Barbara Horlacher, is going to start us off. Good evening and Happy New Year.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here to present information to hold a public hearing to consider FY21 budget amendments. And I better put my glasses back on. There we go. Okay. So in order to facilitate the awarding of bonuses, we need to increase or supplement the budget so that departments have the, the resources to award those bonuses. And you see in your agenda item a list of those supplements that we're requesting, and I will go through the, the list in the same order as they are presented. In order for the county to accomplish providing bonuses of $1,500 per permanent full-time employee and $750 for permanent part-time employee would cost $387,540. And in order to accomplish this, you know, we've been monitoring closely the revenues this year. And I did speak to the treasurer regarding how collections are running, and that was our big concern this year. And collections are running almost exactly to, to last year. So last year's, at this time, they had collected 95.05, and at the same time this year, they've collected 94.36. And that's a combination of all the personal real estate and TCSD taxes. So we're running almost very, very slightly behind where we were last year, not a significant amount. So we feel confident that we are going to achieve not only our budgeted revenues but exceed our budget revenues. So, so we feel the funds are in place to do this, to do these supplements. The supplements, like I said, would be for a county of 387,540. We would do a transfer to the school's operating fund in their instructional category to provide bonuses of the same amount and the same manner, and that would cost $661,240. And we would also provide, now, the, the first amount, the 387,540, that would be for all county employees, including constitutional officers. The 661,240s for schools, then 37,140 in order to provide bonuses for the Department of Social Services, who are, who are also county employees, but we, we tend to, we have a separate fund for them, and so we would do a separate transfer to their fund in that amount. And then in addition, we are, last year, we were going to benchmark our salaries. We had done our second benchmark study in January of 2020, and we were going to benchmark our salaries to other localities in the area. And we, of course, dropped that along with all the other things that we dropped during the COVID study. And that, in order to complete that benchmark all in one year and have it be done would cost approximately $110,000. And that's salaries plus benefits, and that's to complete the rest of this year at those benchmark salaries. They would become effective February 1st, and, and then, of course, those salaries would be built into next year's budget. So those are the bonus and salary items, the items that really affect general fund revenues. There are some other supplements requested tonight. The various school grants that the schools is asking to supplement their budget, they, a $30,626 GEF grant, $13,778 Best Buy grant, a 3,932 federal grant for their special education program. Periodically, usually once a year, the clerk of the court receives a Library of Virginia grant. We need to appropriate that money. That would be $17,295, and she uses those funds to restore the old deed books. And that's really all the items that would supplement the budget. The, the rest of these items are transfers, so they don't affect the bottom line, so to speak, but we need your permission to do these, these size transfers. The schools for categorical transfers, savings of $130,000 in transportation would shift to HR admin, admin and health category for $80,000 and $50,000 to their school maintenance. And the last transfer is a set of CARES Act transfers. When we got to the very bottom end, we realized we couldn't spend some money that we had talked about spending, and we could spend it in other areas. And I should mention, I don't think this has been widely publicized, but with the new CARES Act, we did not get specific state or local funds with that, but what we did get, which we needed months ago, but we got in at the 11th hour, was the authority to continue spending that money. So we, we now, our deadline was December 30th, 1st, 2020. It's now December 31st, 2021. So we will, in that time, certainly be able to use all the funds. Unfortunately, we couldn't do some of the long-term projects we had, you know, because we just didn't know they were going to change that deadline, but that's the kind of things they do to us at about five days before the deadline, so. But we were able to do some planning and do, to transfer some of these funds around 20,000 savings from the vehicle or the van, the prisoner van, was used to complete some laptop purchases for the sheriff's office. And they were unable to complete, they thought, the purchase of dispatch consoles, so we were able to use that in overtime and supplies for COVID. And there will be, I will be giving more reporting as we do wrap up the CARES Act, but we do have extra time. Not that it buys us much, but I know, I'm shaking my head to Ms. Laskolet. That's something we could have used months ago. But at any rate, if there are any questions before the public hearing.
Any questions for Ms. Horlacher?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Horlacher, you gave us, and I didn't write them down, but you're talking about the revenue collections, the tax collections, 94, 95%.
Right.
You're talking about fiscal year, this fiscal year, so it's only the December?
We're talking about the December collection, yes.
And so can you, you're comparing. And so can you, you're comparing, um, the percentage that we've collected this year, 2020 versus 2019 at the same time?
Correct.
Okay, can you give me dollar amounts?
Um, oh, gosh, I, I got these numbers from the treasurer, and so I didn't ask for dollar amounts, no. I can provide them, but I, she just gave me percentages.
Okay, a follow-up, if you don't mind.
Yeah, keep going, keep going.
All right, knowing, well, I, I guess we know that there is enough to cover what we're talking about here.
Correct, and I think I know where you're going, yes. And, and so I brought with me back on, after the first quarter, I was predicting that revenues would be $3.8 million ahead of budget at the first quarter, and so now, next month, we'll look at the second quarter, but, but we already know we're going to do at least as well as what we're using here.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clear that up.
Any other questions before we move to the public hearing?
Don.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Does this, the, the money that we've got here, that you're saying the CARES Act, does that deplete all of our CARES Act money?
And yes, it was going to be really close, but with the extension now, we will definitely be able to. I thought originally maybe we won't, wouldn't spend 80 to 100,000 of it, but now that we have, the ironic thing is that we were having as, you know, expenses, still continuing to have expenses, because we're still doing the cleanings and all those things. So we will be able to use all of the money because of the extension. So we were going to keep doing some of the things we were doing, but not get paid for them, but now we can use that money.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Horlacher, don't go anywhere.
Mr. Chair, if I could, just real quick.
Sure.
You, you mentioned earlier, I think, this most recent round of stimulus package that was passed, the implications for us, you mentioned, it didn't sound like there's going to be any additional funds.
So far, I haven't heard anything. I mean, there may be some special programs that come out of the state, just like there did before, but as far as I know, there's no intention to, to distribute to the localities like they did before. Now, maybe they will for vaccine use or something like that, but, but no, not specifically.
Okay, good, thank you. All right. We'll open the public hearing on the budget amendments. Oh, look your way, Mr. Buzzard, anybody?
There's nobody over here.
Nobody, okay. So we'll go to the room, come on up, Mr. Lyle.
Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Mannikin Road. I, I do appreciate that you are taking this under consideration. I hope you will approve it. Based on a 2,080-hour work year, it works out to about 74 cents a day, or actually, 74 cents an hour, I'm sorry, 1.2 cents a minute is what this bonus would represent over the course of a year. I, I shared briefly with Mr. Young prior to tonight's meeting that one of the things that makes me proud and, and happy to be a Goochlin resident is that I feel well-served by the county as, as a operation. I, I sit sometimes in mild disbelief at how quickly issues are addressed and, and I would almost submit happily resolved, and that comes from a good team. And I tell people, I live in Goochlin because I want to, not because I have to. But our employees work here because they want to, not because they have to. And the more we can do to make sure they understand they are appreciated is, I think, important to the long-term success of our county. People don't just work for a paycheck. Paychecks are important, that's what pays the bills, but I, I do think that recognizing that all of us have some increase in expenses, my taxes went up 3%, even though the rate stayed the same, but they did go up, just thought I'd throw that in there. It's, it's important from my perspective as a citizen that we recognize our staff and that we have more of these 20-year, 25-year, 30-year employee awards that we see, not uncommonly annually. So I hope you will proceed with this, authorize it, and I appreciate that you've given yourself the opportunity to use this as a bonus process in the light with blinking, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyle. Anybody else? And Mr. Buzzard, has anybody raised their hand on the, online?
No, sir, nobody on the line.
All right, not seeing anybody else come forward, we'll close the public hearing and begin discussing the budget amendments.
I'm taking questions.
Absolutely, entertain a motion if that's, or discussion, whichever.
More probably questions for, for Ms. Horlacher. Can you explain to me a little bit the, the budget amendments for the various school grants? Is it my, I just want to make sure my understanding is correct, is this, these are monies that were earned, that weren't included in the budget, that come to us, that we transfer back to the schools, is that correct?
No, it's funds that go directly to the schools. It's, it's grants that they didn't realize they would be earning during the year. Oh, I'm sorry.
Come on up, so we can capture.
And, and schools are here if we have, but it's, it's grants that they didn't realize they would get during the year or increased grants.
Okay, so these aren't additional expenses for us? These were, hey, we got them because of the way things are set up, it has to come through us when it's approved?
It, it, the money goes directly from them, but they need the appropriation from us in order to spend it.
Okay. I think, I think that's it, thank you.
All right. So, Ms. Horlacher, I do have a question, I think we'll probably get a motion here in a moment, but I understood your explanation of Mr. Spoonhour about appropriation, but that made me, there we go, thank you for putting that up on the screen, that's what I was looking for. So this is not just a budget amendment, but it's an appropriation, well, it's both, a budget amendment and an appropriation is what, what you're asking for.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, entertain a motion.
Well, Chair, if I could, real quick, Ms. Horlacher, I know we've had this conversation before, so this may be a little bit redundant, but forgive me if you will. With a lot of these grants that are just kind of one-time pass-throughs and, and some of this CARES money, which is kind of a one-time source, when it's all said and done and all the dust settles, one of our continuing concerns is what is the ongoing impact to the budget going forward? So I know at some point, you'll come back to us and say, okay, the dust is settled.
Right.
This much came in, this much went to one time and is gone and won't come back, and we don't have that recurring expense, and then this much is what we've increased our ongoing expenses.
Correct, yes.
So that we have a, a handle on, after all this is done, what did we do to the budget going forward?
Yes.
So if we could just, I know we've had that conversation.
And then that'll be built into the budget for next year.
That'd be great, thank you, appreciate that.
That's it, yep. Any other? All right. It's on the screen or it's on page 114, Making it Easy Board. If anybody wants to make a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors approve and appropriate amendments and transfers to the county fiscal year 2021 budget in the amount, total amount of $1,311,551 for the identified projects and amounts.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp and Ms. Laskalet. All right, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Peterson.
Yes.
Supervisor Sharp.
Yes.
Supervisor Laskalet.
Yes.
Supervisor Spoonhour.
Yes.
Chair Lumpkins.
Yes. All right, thank you, passes unanimously, thank you, Board, okay. We have the item we moved earlier, but before we get to that, I'm gonna, I hesitated, hopefully you didn't even notice, but I did hesitate when we were going from the first public hearing to the second public hearing, because I got an email from Karen Horn, our school board member, and she asked me, she noted that I did not read her public comment, that she told me she was going to send it in. I, I don't know if she sent it to you, but what I'm going to do is just simply note that she wrote a note that thanked us and encouraged us to, what we, what we did with the first public hearing, and that's adopt the ordinance, and so I'll get with you, Ms. Biskaywitz, later to see if we want to do anything with the, and I apologize to Ms. Horn for not following up sooner, because she did tell me yesterday that she's quarantining and would like to mail something in.
I do have an email. It must have come to you, but not me. But I do have an email.
Okay, good, well, we'll, we'll follow up on that, but the Board members just want to let you know that Ms. Horn did weigh in and thanked us on that. So the last, well, we're kind of still in public hearing bucket, but we've put a new business matter here. The actual item is going to, let me bring it up on the screen, it's a consideration of the actual bonus. Mr. Young, are you?
Yes, I'm, yes, I am presenting on this one.
I'm sorry, take it away, thank you.
You're welcome. It's a pleasure to present this item. In, in March, this is a consideration of bonuses to county employees and employees of constitutional officers. In March, due to the unknown impact on county revenues from the pandemic, the county made significant cuts from its proposed FY 2021 budget, including removing merit increases for employees. To date, county revenues have been impacted much less than anticipated. Accordingly, the Board wishes to provide additional compensation to employees in the form of a one-time monetary bonus. Tonight, I'm requesting the Board authorize the county administrator, which would be me, to award to eligible county employees and employees of constitutional officers in good standing as of December 1st, 2020, a one-time bonus in the amount of $1,500 for permanent full-time and $750 for permanent part-time employees who remain current employees as of February 5th, 2021. The Board of Supervisors and other members of county boards and commissions or other authorities are not eligible for the bonus. Distribution of bonuses will be in a separate payment to employees on February 5th, 2021. Earlier tonight, the Board approved a bonus ordinance and budget amendment on your public hearing agenda. The budget amendment item included 387,540 for county employees, $37,000 for the social services, and $661,240 transfers to schools, to the schools operating fund. The school superintendent has indicated that the school board intends to utilize the funds to provide a one-time monetary bonus to school employees who are active and in good standing. Distribution of bonuses for schools will be in a separate payment to employees on February 5th, 2021. The school board is anticipated to consider an item on their action agenda at their January 12, 2021 meeting. This item is ready for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Young, any, any questions? Yes, Ms. Laskalet.
I do, Mr. Lumpkins. Okay, so, Mr. Young, so we're totally clear, the resolution appears to say that the bonuses would be awarded to county employees who either are permanent or regular, is that the word you use, full-time or part-time employees, and employees of, of constitutional officers? So is it the employees of the constitutional officers or the constitutional officers and their employees?
I believe that would be the constitutional officers and their employees.
Now, this would be, follow up.
Yes, please.
This would be any employee who receives a regular paycheck, whether they're full-time or part-time, not someone who is a, a contract employee that would get paid for putting on a class or doing, you know, a one-time project, is that correct?
The distinction is a permanent part-time employee.
So permanent is the word.
Versus a seasonal, uh, part-time employee.
Okay.
And there's, we have some other definitions of, uh, part-time employees as well, but that is the distinction that we, we are making.
Okay.
Because they would go to those one-time, uh, type payments to people who are doing maybe certain classes for us and that sort of thing, or certain programs, who are not permanent, permanent employees, or a contractor.
Right, that's doing a one-time job or that kind of thing. And we're also not classifying the Board of Supervisors as permanent as well.
That is correct.
Unfortunately.
We're explicitly.
So we explicitly are excluding ourselves.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laskalet, any, any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, if I could, yeah, we, we've never done this before, and we've never seen a year like 2020 before. And if I go back and think about January, February, March, April, we knew a whole lot less than we do now about how to stay safe. And what that asked for was to ask our staff and employees to demonstrate a fair amount of courage to proceed into the unknown and provide every county service throughout the entire pandemic. Now, we've had to reinvent how we do things, do things a little bit differently, but it all got done. And it was just amazing to watch the ingenuity on behalf of county staff, and again, the courage to, to go into the unknown and get things done. There were people coming from miles around to Goochlin to get services, because we were open when a lot of, a lot of others were not. So I guess my comment is, never done this before, but we've never seen this before, and what I saw this year, I was incredibly impressed with the performance of the county staff, the school employees, constitutional officers, and this idea came from the Board because we just liked what we saw on a one-off, one-time, amazing job that was done this year. So I just want to thank all the employees again for all their efforts during the course of the year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, agreed, all right. Any other, all right, this is an action item, so Chair will entertain a motion. Page 107.
If you would refer to the, the motion in your.
It's not a pub, this is not a public hearing.
Your motion in your, your motion sheet, your motion sheet in front of you.
Yep, and on page 107, it's there as well, yep.
The, the agenda item motion's been amended.
Thank you, thank you for catching that, appreciate that, yes, yeah, don't, don't look at 107, the motion, if you, if you choose to make it, is in, and everybody has one of these motions. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board authorize the county administrator to award to eligible county employees and employees of constitutional officers in good standing as of December 1st, 2020, a one-time bonus in the amount of $1,500 for permanent full-time and $750 for permanent part-time employees who remain current employees as of February 5th, 2021, as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Second.
Second from Mr. Sharp, thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Ms. Laskalet.
I believe we clarified that it was not just the employees of the constitutional officers, it was, in fact, the constitutional officers and their employees. So could we do, accept it as a friendly amendment?
So accepted, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Mr. Sharp? Okay, Mr. Sharp says, yes. So thank you, Ms. Laskalet, so that's as amended, as amended.
I'd just like to be.
Yeah, yeah, please, go ahead.
Um, you know, it's been interesting, and I just kind of piggyback on what Mr. Peterson said, coming from the private sector to the public sector has been very interesting to me, and probably my only experience with what I would see in the public sector is maybe Parks and Rec, and you just. And you just didn't, you didn't get a real appreciation for how hard these folks work. So I know a lot of you, you've been working with this team for a long time. I have been nothing but impressed. The, 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 the way that folks have got out of their way to serve these citizens has been just really eye-opening to me. And it was really, for those of you that don't think or, or question whether your, your staff is working hard for you, just come and, you know, walk a day in their shoes, you will probably gladly go back to your own job. So I just, I, I, when we were having the budget discussions and, you know, deciding on whether to give raises, and, you know, I think I was the only one that didn't vote for the CIP changes, which are looking great, by the way, so, for the treasurer's office. But to do, to be able to do this, and, and you have to thank the citizens of Goochlin County to, who are getting their taxes in on time and allowing us to really give a little bit back. I would, I would say this, this, this is a, a great, and, and hopefully folks will understand this is a, a token of our appreciation, but for what they do, I'm, from somebody that's been probably newer to this, I've been really duly impressed, so.
Thank you, Mr. Spoonhour. Any other comments? Seeing none, Mr. Young would do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Supervisor Sharp?
Yes.
Supervisor Laskolet?
Yes.
Supervisor Spoonhour?
Yes.
Chair Lumpkins?
Yes. All right. I believe, I was trying to get right to 45 minutes, and I think I made it. This Board of Supervisors is going to adjourn until we get together with, later this month, on January 26th at 2:00 in the afternoon at the Central High School Cultural and Educational Complex gym. Looking forward to getting with our colleagues at the school board for a joint capital improvement plan work session. And after that, at our next, day of our next regular board meeting, February 2nd, at 1:00 PM, we'll have our Audit and Finance Committee meeting, and then roll right into our 2:00 PM and 6:00 PM regular business meeting on February 2nd, right here. Any other business to come before the board? Thank you all again for the inaugural meeting. I appreciate it, and I think it'll be a little longer next month. But enjoy the evening. Thank you all for attending.